Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the May 28 Blue Earth County Board Meeting. For those that are able, please stand and join us in the pledge North flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is our agenda review. Mr. Meyer, please review the agenda.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda this morning.
I'll move the agenda.
Got a motion and second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, no. The agenda is approved. Item number three, tab number one, our first order of business is a county ditch 16 public hearing. First order of business for that would be to review that agenda. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda as well.
Okay, you've heard there's no changes.
Move it.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, no. That agenda for Blue Earth County ditch 16 is approved. Today's hearing's purpose is to present the viewer's report and to receive comments from all parties interested in county ditch 16 redetermination of benefits. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, will hear from the point of viewers, and then we will open for public comments. First, I'll ask Ryan Hinnaker, Blue Earth County Drainage Staff, to review the jurisdictional documents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Landowner informational meeting was held on May 14th of this year, 2024. Hearing notices for today were mailed out on May 1st. Notice was also posted outside of this building, and the public affidavit was published in the Mankeel Free Press, May 7th, 14th, and 21st of this year. We also have a quick memo to go through. County ditch 16 watershed has approximately 2200 benefited acres and is located in Mapleton and Danville Townships. On October 22nd, 2019, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. The engineer and viewers were appointed in order to create an updated benefits and damages listing and viewers' report for county ditch 16. Copy of the drafted viewers' report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 26th, 2024. Today's hearing allows the appointed viewers to provide their explanation for the drafted viewers' report for county ditch 16 and provide an opportunity for public comment for the proceeding. Action requested by the board today is we request the Drainage Authority accept the drafted findings in order, updating the county ditch 16 viewers' report and benefits and damages. That is all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've heard the jurisdictional documents. It would be appropriate to have a motion to accept them into the legal record.
So moved.
Motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, no. Motion carried. The jurisdictional documents are put into the legal record. Next, I'll ask the appointed viewing staff, please come to the podium and review the viewer's report. Good morning, Ron. Please identify yourself for the record.
Hi, well, my name's Ron Rinquist. I'm one of the appointed viewers. Also in attendance today are Lance Roberts and Dan Ruby, who were part of the viewing team that was originally appointed on this as well. The other member is Bill Anderson, and he's not able to make it today. County ditch number 16, as Ryan said, was originally established in 1906. There have been very few changes. The State Highway Department was granted permission to move a portion of the ditch along Highway 30, and then in 1976, the pipe inlets and field crossings were formally incorporated into the ditch so that all future maintenance would include those. Other than that establishment, there have been no other improvements established within the ditch system. The ditch system provides an outlet for certain lands within section 35, 36 of Buford Township, and for sections 1, 2, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 24 in Mapleton Township, and it is all within Blue Earth County. The viewing process is a mass appraisal process. We go out and we look at all of the properties within the designated watershed. The watershed is delineated now using the LiDAR information, and then that watershed is verified by our field investigations. We go out and look at every 40 acre and establish benefit classifications as part of the mass appraisal process. The classes are A, B, C, D for general purposes. They are A-land without artificial drainage would be standing water cattails and have no agricultural or other use. B-lands are seasonally flooded pasture lands but are usable for higher pasture. The biggest change in benefited areas within the watershed are the C and the D-lands. C-lands are those lands that are typically being pattern tiled, but were always farmable. And D-lands are those individual upland areas that, on an acre-by-acre basis, don't really need artificial drainage, but they do benefit because we don't farm acre-by-acre anymore. We farm field-by-field, and therefore, there's a benefit to the upper acres in production and value because the low lands get drained. Once we look at those, then we determine what type of value each of those change, each of those classes would experience in changed in value. We typically do that assuming an NRCS design standard is provided to all of the properties. A-land becomes productive, but still, on occasion, will have flooding or ponding areas, and so over a 100-year rainfall cycle, we estimate that that can have up to 92% of what we consider an optimum production. The B-lands similarly get wet at times for 96%. The C-lands and the D-lands, because they typically have no ponding or flooding characteristics, are estimated at 100% of our optimum production. To determine the market values of those, we look at sales. Now, if you look at a $10,000 an acre sale, not every acre within that parcel that sells for 10,000 is worth 10,000. Some might be worth eight, some might be worth 12. We look at the sales, we go through an analysis similar to what we do in valuing or classifying the lands within the watershed, and analyze those sales and break down the estimated market sales value for each of those classes. We then verify that through an income approach, or the increase in agricultural production, where we look at what type of income each of those classes of land would produce under those two scenarios, with or without adequate drainage. When we do that, we have estimated in this area, we've estimated an optimum yield for corn of 210 bushel, and current market value, we estimated at $4.50. Soybeans, we estimated a yield of 60 bushels at $12, and gives us a 50-50 rotation or an annual income of $832.50. We subtract direct input costs from that. Direct input costs do not include full equipment depreciation, nor do they include cash rent because this is going to the owner of the property, and it is a change in income with and without the drainage. So, we then come up with a income. We adjust our production income by the efficiency of the ditch system. We subtract then the production costs, and we subtract from that the previous income because especially in the C and D lands, those were farmable even without artificial drainage. We also then subtract the cost of private tiling. We've allowed $1,000 per acre for the cost of installing pattern tile to meet that optimum production. The ditch system provides an outlet to these properties, whether they're properly tiled or pattern tiled or not. The availability of the outlet is there for them to utilize. From that, then, we come up with what we consider as a capitalization rate, and that is our comparison of the income approach and the sales approach to values. We know that at $4.50 corn with the current inputs and what land is selling for, there's not a lot of return, so we've estimated the 25-year life and only a 1% return on investment at this point in the comparison between sales and the income approach. That gives us a potential value for A acres of $7,590, B acres of $5,130, C acres of $2790, and D acres of $920. When we then look at each of the individual drainage systems, we consider things for adjusting from that potential. If the system does not provide an outlet directly to all of the properties, or the properties do not have adequate hydraulic capacity, an efficiency rate is applied. That considers both location and the hydraulic capacities of the tiles or the branches. So, we would get a potential benefit adjusted by our efficiency rate, and that would produce what is our considered net benefits. Net benefits are our opinion of the value, the increased value of the property because the current ditch system exists, assuming it's in a reasonable state of repair. Road benefits, we do charge for tile if there is tile involved. Tile is based solely on the fact that it provides an outlet, not based on the size of the tile, but on the fact that it's there for them to hook their private tile up into. Road benefits are based on the decreased cost of construction under current cost approach because roads are not bought or sold, nor do they produce any income, so we look at the cost savings for reduced construction or maintenance based on the same soil classifications of the conditions that would exist that the roads were built across. So, with that, we have estimated or determined that the benefits to all lands within the Road benefits, $229,604.70, for a total benefit of $3,683,887.25. There were no requests or changes that were recommended during the landowner meetings on ditch 16.
Okay, thank you for that report. I'll ask board members serving as drainage authority to clarify questions on the viewer's report.
I don't have any at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then, at this time, we will open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. There's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relative, relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. So, I'll ask, is there anyone wishing to make comments? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. I'll ask a second time if there's anyone wishing to make comments on county ditch 16 redetermination of benefits. And I'll ask for the third and final time, anyone wishing to make comments for CD 16 redetermination of benefits. Sitting in hearing, no further comments. I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Ask if there are further questions from board members.
No questions?
No questions? It now would be appropriate to have a motion to accept the drafted findings in order, approving and adopting the viewer's report and benefits and damages report.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and second discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions. Just want to thank the staff and the landowners for the landowner meeting. That is always very helpful to kind of finalize some of the things that we have to get done before this meeting, so thanks for that extra effort, and thank you to the landowners.
And I would, it's much easier to have hearings go smoothly when we've got the questions answered at the landowner meetings, when we've got plenty of time to do that. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor with a motion, say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, no. The motion is carried. The drafted findings and orders is approved, and the viewers' report and benefits and damages are approved. This concludes the county ditch 16 redetermination of benefits hearing. Item number four, tab number two on today's agenda is county ditch 60 public hearing, and I will ask Mr. Meyer to review the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda.
Okay, hearing no changes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, no. Motion carried. The agenda is approved. Purpose of today's hearing is to prevent the viewer's report, to receive comments from all parties interested in county ditch 60 redetermination of benefits proceeding. The order of business for this hearing will be the same. Staff will review jurisdictional documents, we will hear from the appointed viewers, and then we will open it for public comments. Mr. Ryan Hinnaker, would you please review the jurisdictional documents?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, hearing notices for today's county ditch 60 hearing were mailed out on May 1st of 2024. Informational landowner meeting was held the same day on May 14th of 2024. Notices were posted outside of this building today, and the public affidavit was also ran in the Mankeel Free Press on May 7th, 14th, and 21st. Another quick memo. County ditch 60 watershed has approximately 570 benefited acres and located in Sterling Township. On May 7th of 2019, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. The engineer and viewers were appointed and ordered to create an updated benefits and damages listing and viewers' report for county ditch 60. Copy of the drafted viewers' report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 26th, 2024. Final hearing date for this proceeding was set on April 9th, 2024. Today's hearing is to listen to the appointed viewers, give their explanation for the drafted viewers' report for county ditch 60, and also allow public comment to be given for this proceeding. Again, the action requested for today, asking the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority to accept the drafted findings in order, approving the adopted updated county ditch 60 viewers' report, that the county ditch 60 benefits and damages report be updated, and that any and all new assessments use the newly approved amounts. That is all I have currently. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ryan. We've heard the jurisdictional documents, so now would be appropriate to have a motion to put them into the legal record.
I'll move it.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, no. Motion carried. The jurisdictional documents are in the legal record. I'll now ask the appointed viewing staff to come up and review the viewer's report. Good morning again, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the board. Here I am again. It does seem like I just saw you a minute ago. Okay, so, county ditch number 60, very little history on that. It was established in May of 1920 with construction in 1921. There have been no established improvements, and there have been no major repairs of record to this. The system provides an outlet to lands within sections 23, 25, 26, 34, and 35 in Sterling Township, all in Blue Earth County. The process and the values that we have used within this report are the same as that we used in ditch 16, having potential benefits of $7,590 for As, $530 for Bs, $2790 for Cs, and potentially 920 acres for Ds. Land classifications have been done the same. The adjustments have been made slightly different because this system is all tile and does not have adequate hydraulic capacity anywhere within the system. So, on a hydraulic adjustment, we have said that the A acres potentially only receive 50% of their potential benefit. B acres only receive 70%, C acres 90%, and the D acres only 95 because of that limited Our report did include 568 and a half proposed benefited acres. It proposed a benefit to the lands of $1,195,345.45. Benefits to the roads of $38,225, for a total benefit of $1,233,525.45. We did have comments from landowners, both at the landowner meetings and also from Greg Olson, who was not able to be at the landowner meetings and was out of town, I think, today unless he happened to get back early, and he had questions about the viewer's report because he had taken one of the upper ends of the branches and had put a new outlet directly back into the creek, virtually eliminating the need for the public system within part of his properties. We looked at the records, and although the tile does run into his property and has a number of feet of tile in there, it has never officially been abandoned. There was discussion of other potential abandonment on some of the upper reaches of some of the other tile branches as well at that landowner meeting. So, at this point, I cannot recommend that he be removed from the ditch system because he has not abandoned the tile that he has now diverted into his private tile for an outlet. It would be my recommendation that the board consider tabling or continuing this hearing until such time as he has an opportunity to submit a petition to abandon the tile within his property, and at that time, we would adjust the benefits accordingly. Any other landowners that may want to follow suit and abandon some of the upper reaches, we could make adjustments to that as well. Otherwise, if the board chooses to adopt the report, it would be as recommended today because those have not been, those abandonments have not taken place. The adjustment for the inadequate drainage system capacity was addressed within our proximity and hydrologic adjustment, but because he has cut that off and completely diverted the county tile into a different outlet, it may not reflect the true benefit if he decides to abandon that tile.
Thank you for the report. I'll ask for clarifying questions from the Drainage Authority. I'll go first. Mr. Greg Olson is here today just for transparency. We may hear more about that. And then my other question is, abandonment requires a petition, correct, a petition to abandon, so that would be a process to go through. Clarifying questions on the viewer's report.
Mr. Chair, if they do the abandonment, you would get that done before the next public hearing if we decide to continue this, correct? Or would all be simultaneously?
We could probably more than simultaneously, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hearing no other clarifying questions? We'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. Again, if you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You know that comments are expected to be civil and respected. Please note, the meeting's being recorded, five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know you've used your allotted time. In addition, we may restrict and limit to a person whose remarks are repetitive, not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. I'll ask anyone wishing to make comments to come to the podium and identify themselves and their address.
Good morning. Greg Olson, Amboy, Minnesota. And this game, this abandonment, kind of surprised me. I'm all for that. Obviously, the mains are way too small on that, and I was getting no benefit on the top end, so we ran a new main up through there and cut that off, and it appears to be working very well, and it will alleviate some of the pressure downstream on the rest of the system. So, I guess my, I would ask that it would be adjourned or extended so we can go through that process. Also, on the top end, on another section of it, the main is disintegrated, and the group had put a new main up through there, so that needs to be addressed, and also, there's a branch that goes off across apples up to gobles and bonnets that I have some questions about. It was mentioned that the board abandoned it. I don't know if that was the case. There were some issues going on out there, but I think we need a little more time to figure out because this is obviously not done very often, which is a good thing, and so I thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me on what went on there? Pretty much understand it?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for making yourself available today. Anyone else wishing to make comments on CD 60 redetermination of benefits? I'll ask for a third and final time, anyone wishing to make comments on county ditch 60 redetermination of benefits? Appreciate the comments we had. Hearing no further comments. I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask for questions from the board or recommendations.
If we decide to continue this hearing, do you have a specific date?
I do. Yep, so if we continue to a date specific, a date and time, we don't have to renotice all of this. I'm recommending July 30th unless anybody from the board has...
9:00 AM?
9:00 AM, yep.
Does that work for our schedule, Bob?
It's a scheduled board date.
You checked it out. It's a date.
Yep. Yep, it is.
Okay, Ron, help us out to select...
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with continuing until July 30th. I would request that you set a date to submit those petitions for abandonment or any additional information, like the July 1st. That gives them a month of June to put that together so that we can address it prior to the continuance of the hearing.
Very good idea. And just, do we need that, that in the continuation motion? We need the hearing date, but also the deadline to submit anything to the viewers? Okay? Other questions?
What was the date for the deadline?
July 1st, he said.
July 1st, you want the deadline date?
Okay.
Is that workable, Ryan? From our perspective?
Yeah, I don't see why it shouldn't be. It's just a couple of landowners, Mr. Olson being one of them.
And this would now require another landowner meeting?
I don't see that.
Maybe some internal meetings if necessary, but...
Right, I think it'd be more specialized than just a couple folks. Yep, get the paperwork filled out and get it up and running so they can get going. Although, the viewers probably can get going ahead of even the paperwork, but, yep.
We want to do it right.
Yep.
Much easier to do it than have to redo it. All right, any other questions? If not, it would be, in order to continue this hearing, with to a July 30th hearing date, and asking with the July 1st deadline to submit any changes or any concerns to the appointed viewers. I would ask for a motion of that sort.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. Do we know what we're voting on? We're continuing this to July 30th with the July 1st deadline for more information. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, no. Motion carried. This has been continued, hearing has been continued to July 30th with the July 1st deadline to do that. This concludes today's hearing on CD 60, which will be continued on July 30th. Thank you, everyone, for attending that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yep.
Thanks, Ryan. Thank you, Ron.
We now, on our agenda, are to, item number five, tab three, planning and zoning. Thank you for attending. Okay, the next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. I ask planning and zoning staff to present their action item. This is a public hearing. Public comment will be allowed. This is a public hearing. Public comment will be allowed in just a moment. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. There's a five-minute time limit. Our county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, our board may restrict or limit the time allotted to persons whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. So at this time, I'd ask planning and zoning staff to introduce yourselves for the record and introduce the items before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Considine, County Zoning Administrator. Our first item this morning is PC zero seven dash twenty-four. It's a request from the Miniopa Cemetery Association for review and approval of a conditional use permit to expand an existing cemetery. The expansion will include a pet cemetery and scatter gardens for pet and human ashes. The property is zoned agricultural and is in the urban fringe overlay district of the city of Mankato. The property is located in part of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section twenty, South Bend Township. At the planning commission, staff presented the report. Representatives of the cemetery association were present. They asked the planning commission to consider allowing pets other than dogs and cats, such as goats, under three hundred and fifty pounds, to be buried at the cemetery. The planning commission stated, the state of Minnesota regulates the disposal of livestock and goats, pigs, et cetera, and they are considered livestock. The planning commission amended a staff-proposed condition. They amended it to read, only domesticated animals pursuant to Minnesota state statute shall be buried or scattered in the cemetery. Livestock such as, but not limited to, horses, cows, and pigs shall not be buried within the cemetery. Following that, there was no comment from the public. Members of the planning commission had no further questions, concerns, or comments. And following discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and the conditions recommended by staff with the one change to the language of a condition by the planning commission. And staff supports the planning commission's change in language to the condition. And so the board action this morning would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that report. Any clarifying questions? Seeing none at this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC seven dash twenty-four, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak on PC seven dash twenty-four? I'll ask a second time if there's anyone wishing to comment. And I'll ask a third and final time, anyone wishing to comment on PC seven dash twenty-four? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion, move to discussion by the board and comments from board members.
I have no questions or comments.
No.
Okay, I would entertain a motion. Which approve?
I'd move approval of the resolution based on the recommendations by the planning commission.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The resolution is approved. Ask staff to present the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PC zero eight dash twenty-four. It is a request from Blue Earth County for review and approval of an amendment to Chapter twenty, Land Division of the Blue Earth County Code of Ordinances. The amendment clarifies land divisions resulting from public infrastructure projects and update standards associated with deed restrictions on property that is divided. At the planning commission, staff presented the report and there was no public comment. Members of the planning commission had no questions or concerns or comments. And following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings recommended by staff. And so the board action this morning would be passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any clarifying questions on eight twenty-four? At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make comments regarding PC oh eight dash twenty-four, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Who would like to go first? I ask if there's any comments on PC eight twenty-four? And I'll ask for a third and final time, anyone wishing to make comments on PC eight twenty-four? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, return to the board.
I'd move approval of the resolution based on the recommendation by the planning commission.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for approval of the resolution, discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The resolution is approved. Next item, please, John.
Our final item here this morning is PC zero nine dash twenty-four. It's another request from Blue Earth County for review and approval of an amendment to Chapter twenty-four, zoning, Article six, the urban fringe overlay district or UFD. This is to allow broadcasting, cellular communication, and personal communication service towers and facilities subject to the performance standards contained in Section twenty-four dash three twenty-three as a conditional use. Staff presented the report to the planning commission and there was no public comment. Staff, staff was asked by the planning commission if cities had been notified of the amendment and staff affirmed that they had been, along with notice being sent to townships. Members of the planning commission had no questions or concerns or additional comments. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings recommended by staff. And so the board action this morning would be passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that report. Any clarifying questions? If not, we will open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make comments regarding PC nine dash twenty-four, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak on PC nine dash twenty-four? Is there anyone wishing to speak on PC nine twenty-four? And I'll ask for a third and final time, anyone wishing to comment on PC nine dash twenty-four? Seeing none, hearing none, we will close the public comment portion and return it back to discussion by the board. Comments from board members?
I have none, Mr. Chair. I'd move approval of the resolution based on the recommendation by the planning commission.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Are we, discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The resolution is approved. This would conclude the public hearing portion for planning and zoning.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Item number six, tab number four, hazard mitigation grant program. I'd ask Sheriff Horstel to come forward. Thank you, folks, for joining us.
Thank you.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Head of the room.
So part of emergency management's, last fall, we started going around and trying to identify high population areas in the county that aren't, can't hear warning sirens when they go off. And two of them were the Bray Park and Daly Park when it's full of campers. So Eric applied for a grant that did not need any signature besides mine to apply for it, but it does need board approval to accept it and it's, the grant is, well, the project for the two sirens is fifty-seven thousand with a twenty-five percent match. Five percent of that match will be county labor hours. So Eric and Brenda have already been working on it. And then the city of Madison Lake and the city of Mapleton have agreed to come up with the rest, either out of city funds or fire department funds to cover the total project cost. So bids have already been accepted and with electrician and we're just hopefully to get those sirens installed at the end of the summer.
Appreciate that.
Great.
So these will be the first two county-owned sirens. Townships and cities own the rest of it. We'll own these and have to maintain, contain these two sirens. But they'll be brand new and I don't expect any problems for years, so.
Okay, we've heard the recommendation. What's your wishes? Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The grant acceptance is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Tab or item number seven, tab five, human services. Good morning, Angie.
Good morning.
Good morning, Angie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to present the human services report for this month. I have two items that I'm asking the board's approval for. The first is a contract with ACC Midwest Transportation. ACC provides transportation services for medical assistance clients to attend medical and dental appointments, to pick up prescriptions, and access other related medical services. They would be a new provider to our area and they are based out of Hutchinson, but are slowly expanding into this area with a few drivers. This contract would enable Blue Earth County Human Services to provide transportation which fulfills our responsibility to our residents that are receiving fee-for-service medical assistance. ACC would be our second transportation option for Blue Earth County at the present time. Reimbursement rates are mandated by the state and the county will reimburse for all eligible rides at the state-authorized rate. The term of that contract is June first, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. It is a short contract because they're a new provider, just getting into this area. And so we're just looking to work with them through the end of the year, hopefully ongoing, but they need to, we need to get started somewhere. The second item is a contract with MRCI. So Blue Earth County contracts with MRCI to provide employment services to participants of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program known as SNAP. This is an addenda, an addendum to the county's current SNAP contract with MRCI. Blue Earth County received additional funding from the Minnesota Department of Human Services to provide employment-related services to SNAP participants. The additional funding amount is thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, which brings our total contract amount to thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eight. While the original grant amount was five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. It is very common for that first amount to be very small and then later in the year, they provide us additional funds as it's available to the state. So this is a very common cadence in terms of this, this contract. The original contract term and the term of the addendum is October first, twenty twenty-three, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Those are the two action items that I would be seeking approval from this morning.
And we are okay to do those together?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion?
The only comment I made is that it's, it's great to see another transportation service in the county. And I know we, we're getting short on transportation services. Some of them have backed off. And it's great to see another one. I hope this one works out.
Mr. Chair, will they be doing weekends by chance or are they just going to be a weekly? Because didn't we have a problem with trying to get some weekend rides?
Weekends is difficult and that's something that we are working with them on to see if they will be able to provide. It is highly dependent on the number of drivers that they have and the driver, driver's availability. But that is something that we, you know, will always continue to seek out. At this point, I can't say for sure, but that is a definite goal.
Now, we imagine them aren't a real common occurrence, but it's totally out of your hands, correct?
Right.
I mean, a hospital discharges somebody on a Saturday, you guys got no say in that.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, good for you guys.
Other discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. Those two action items are approved. Informational.
Thank you very much. I have three items. It is, May is Mental Health Month. And so we generally try to bring mental health-related information to you in the month of May. So I have three items, the Behavioral Health Unit Report, the Mental Health Center Report, and the Children's Mental Health Unit Report. The first two focus primarily on twenty twenty-three data. Children's mental health gives twenty, twenty-two-three data plus a little bit of insight into what's happening so far this year. There are a number of pages on this report and I don't intend to go item by item. Just want to highlight a few things for you. The Adult Mental Health Case Management Services as part of the Behavioral Health Unit Report is focused on services that are provided to adults with serious and persistent mental illness. And those services are generally case management. And that has been highly effective in reducing the need for hospitalization and crisis intervention services. And it is a significant part of what that unit provides. We've seen a twenty-seven percent increase in year-end adult mental health case count over the past five years. So at the very last day of the year, they take a snapshot of the case count and then, and show that in terms of the trending. This is really back to and almost slightly above the pre-COVID levels of case management. So we're seeing more and more individuals reaching out for services. You'll see the two graphs at the bottom is the year-end total cases, but then the case management referrals, the numbers are quite similar. And when someone is receiving case management services, it's more of a longer-term service, six months to multiple years. And so just a point of information that not everyone referred actually needs ongoing case management. And so the intake role that we have created within that unit has done a great job. It's critical at determining who actually needs the long-term services. And they provide short-term information referral to those that don't meet the criteria or think that they may need those long services. But then learn shortly, working with the intake staff, that there's, you know, shorter-term things that can be put in place to help them. So it prevents them from ever needing that long-term case management, which is a good thing. The next chart shows the civil commitments for the Behavioral Health Unit. And we have seen a twenty-four percent increase in requests for civil commitment over the past five years. The interesting thing is we look at the second graph on the page. The number for chemical dependency civil commitment seems to be on the rise. And the difficult part with that is that there's a lot of lacking placements. You'll see this as a theme as I talk about mental health services. There's a lack of inpatient and residential placements for certain types of needs for individuals. The CD placements specifically are lacking due to closures of facilities. So we've seen a number of facilities across the state close. It's not, not localized to one area or another. It's, it's a trend that's happening across the state and that's highly concerning, given the rise in service need. And then at the very bottom of the page, you'll see the, the screening outcomes. We try to intervene quickly and early in ways that we don't end up with full commitments for everyone because that is the most restrictive option. And so if we can engage with services and try and get the individual to voluntarily seek services, that would be what ends up in a state of commitment to be screened out or dismissed, which is usually a very healthy option for individuals. The next page is our charts on the Second Step Clubhouse. And so as you all know, it's a community support program and resource center for adults with serious and persistent mental illness. It's located on the fourth floor of the Vine Building. We just had the thirty-five-year anniversary open house, which we had just over a hundred individuals come to that event, which is more than we've ever had before and was very, very exciting. The Second Step Clubhouse has a hundred and ten active members last year and a total of three thousand, four hundred individual members that can come and go and use the, use the service as needed. Excuse me, three thousand, four hundred individual member visits throughout the year. And there are more than a hundred and ten members, but the hundred and ten are those that are active and come on a regular basis. Eighty-five percent of the clubhouse members attended in person and by Zoom. So following the pandemic, during the pandemic, we instituted a Zoom option for the social rec services that they provide, the therapeutic services. And members told us that they. And members told us that they wanted us to continue that. So, we've continued that with a number of, of our activities and groups and events, and it's still something that is used by a, a pretty sizable portion of the population. So, it's something that we want to continue. And Second Step Clubhouse added 27 new members last year. Would you like me to stop or just keep going to the next one?
Well, any, any specific questions on this before we go to children?
Just exciting about the Clubhouse.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The Blue Earth County Mental Health Center Report is next, and the data that you see in the report reflects 2023 data. You will see that the, the high volume or the high percentage of individuals that we serve at the Blue Earth County Mental Health Center are individuals with serious and persistent mental illness, which is really the most, the highest, most acute and chronic illnesses that affect individuals. So, we are in a kind of a special niche of, of the healthcare population for the population that we serve. There are, when you look at the community, there are many, many, many more people who have SMI, which are Serious Mental Illness, versus SPMI. And so, we really cater to those that are, that have the most complex healthcare needs from a mental health standpoint. So, you will see that 92% of people that we serve are SPMI. The second page, the no-show rate by month. Last year, the team really focused in on the no-show rate. We know that the average no-show rate for this specific population and this type of healthcare is about a 25% no-show rate for appointments, which is significantly high considering all different types of healthcare. And so, that is a national statistic that has really stayed steady for years and years. Our team wanted to challenge that and say, we don't have to have that high of a no-show rate. Let's try some new and innovative things, some different communication styles, and you'll see that it significantly dropped the no-show rate, which is, which what that means is more people are able to get services. That's, and we have less wasted time or unused time. And so, that is, that is very significant. And, you know, I really give a hand to our clinicians and our support team there that took that on themselves. The diagnosis categories of people served, just to give you a picture of, of what types of diagnoses we are treating in the Mental Health Center. The five most common are anxiety, bipolar disorder, depression, schizophrenia, and schizoaffective disorder. A lot of our patients have multiple of those diagnoses. It's not just one. But that gives you an idea of the types of illnesses that we are, that we are treating. Questions on the Mental Health Center? Last is the Children's Mental Health Report, and there are multiple pages to this report. I just want to highlight a couple of things. Just a reminder that Children's Mental Health Targeted Case Management Services is a mandated service for all children with severe and emotional disturbance. And so, this team has expanded over the last couple of years, thanks to your contributions to staffing. You'll see it has been needed and has been utilized, and our ability to keep up with that mandated service is showing success based on your investment. In 2022, there were 156 cases assigned or opened in that year. If we jump to 2024, there were 180 cases. So, we've seen a 15% increases on open cases. That is not reflective of the number of referrals we get. You'll see that on another page. Again, that intake role is critical in assisting people with short-term needs, but these are long-term services. The length of time that any child receives Children's Mental Health Case Management Services totally depends on the needs of the child. And we see ranges from six months to 15 years. Currently, we have a person that we've been serving for 15 years, a child. The next slide is the program data. A couple of things to highlight. We hit our high in 2018 in terms of our average caseload per worker. The mandated or the rule of caseload size for Children's Mental Health is 15. Our high in 2018 was 29 children per caseworker. So, almost double of where the state says that they should be. Over the years, you can see that that has changed substantially to the investment of additional staff. So, currently, as of April, the staff, average caseload per worker is 17.14 children, which is much, much more manageable. They're actually able to do proactive work versus essentially just crisis response when your caseload is double the size of what it should be. Average number of weekly referrals that are pending. So, we do work off a bit of a waitlist, and we're pending 17 to 20 on average. So, the number of requests for services is still very substantial. And again, while they're pending, we are working on some short-term goals, which sometimes does eliminate the need for long-term case management. Some trends that are interesting in children's mental health. There's been an increase in the number of sibling groups. And what that means is our case managers are working with more than one child per family. So, we are working with the brothers and sisters of children. And so, that ranges from two to four children per family. And right now, we have 28 families, individual families that we are working with. In some ways, it makes case planning easier because you know the family dynamic. In other ways, it's very challenging because of the needs of those children are very unique to each other. And so, it is different case plans essentially, but those workers coordinate with each other very directly. We've seen an increase in co-occurring disorders, where that's mental illness and substance use disorder, as young as 11 years old. And that's a very difficult story to share about an 11-year-old with very substantial chemical health and mental health issues. The, when we work with clients with complex and intensive mental or he, or chemical health needs and high risk of injury to self or others, because that often comes along with that, working with an individual with those highly complex needs is, is not typical in terms of what case management was designed to be. And so, with those very complex and intense cases, we range from 26 hours to 72, 73 hours a month for an individual client. We're, you know, our direct time working with them. The state really requires that we have one contact a month. We provide the case planning and the coordination. While with 26 to 72 hours, you can see clearly that we spend multiple contacts with these families and children per month to try and assure their safety. Some changes and trends that are continued. The, you know, the theme really is, we don't have enough hospital beds. We don't have enough residential placements. And you can see that the numbers that are listed, some are voluntary, some are not voluntary. We do frequently work with other units. We have six youth that we're working with, Child and Family Services with. We also have 10 youth that we're working with Corrections that are in out-of-home placements. These are just ones that are in placement. There are many more that we work with simultaneously with these units as well. A number of years ago, that there was a change to group residential and children's residential treatment, and the state had a plan to, basically what happened during that time is there was a number of facilities that closed due to the funding model and the policy changes at the state level. The plan was to reopen many of them under this new model called a PRTF, Psychiatric Residential Treatment Facility. It's inpatient, or res, sorry, residential level, so just a step below inpatient care. And the goal was statewide that there would be 350 beds available as of 2023. But as of the time this report was written, we only have 100 beds statewide. So, we have the need for 350 beds plus, but we only have access to 100 of them, which makes that challenging for these children to, you know, continue on their recovery. As a result, that we don't have as many placements as we would, any place, as many placement options in the state that we would like to have. We currently have four children placed out of state. And the next couple of pages show you how we have utilized, at, at a high level, how we've utilized out-of-state placements. This is challenging because this is, this comes most often with full county cost, because it's not paid for by medical assistance. So, this is, this is the last resort when we look at options for children, but these children are in dire need of these services. And so, you can look at how we've been working with a facility out of Massachusetts, North Dakota, Wisconsin. So, we're frequently traveling. We also have to see these kids on a monthly basis. So, our, our staff are traveling to make these contacts because we are required to do so. The next page tells you where we are currently, where we currently have kids out of state. So, Massachusetts, North Dakota, and two places in Wisconsin. The total cost of services provided in April was $76,000 because we don't have that local and state resource. It's a little bit of a...
Shocker.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard one because it's not what we want to do. We don't want to send children away from their families, but when that is the only place that we can find with an opening and the skill set to treat the needs of the child, unfortunately, that's the, where we have to go for the resource.
And the problem is, is the family that wants to see them have, you know, most of them are, many of them are very poor, and they can't afford to travel a long distance to go see, see their child.
Absolutely.
Double-edged sword.
Phil has been here and shared with you about the work of the Children's Cabinet over the past year, two years probably. And the Children's Cabinet has, is basically a, a subset of our South Central Community Based Initiative. It is comprised of the Human Services Supervisors for Children's Mental Health for our region. And they have been working and planning and saying, what are things that are within our control that we can do to try and help locally to improve access to services? Just standing up a residential placement is really outside of the scope of their role. However, they are doing what they can to be very efficient in using out-of-state placements and reducing the amount of time that caseworkers are spending trying to find placements and increasing their relationships with providers across the state so that we can facilitate easier, easier placements. And so, they have been working very hard at this. And one of the things, one of the, the four projects that they've been working on, multiple projects, I should say, is they wanted to know, are there providers out there that would be interested in standing up a children's crisis center, much like our Adult Crisis Center, the South Central Community Based, or, excuse me, the SCCBI's Crisis Center with Horizon Homes for adults? And so, they wrote and published a request for information, and we have just ended that RFI response time. And we do have three very quality responses of providers that are interested in working with us to see what would it take to develop something like that in our region? The closest, well, there's one in Rochester, there's one in Wilmer. We would love to have one more locally so that kids can stay close to home when they need that residential, short-term crisis care. And so, also through this last legislative session, they, we worked very closely with Olmsted County, MICA Counties, and MACSA to request legislation that ended up passing for an MA benefit for children's crisis center services. So, right now, that's all county cost, essentially, if we use those crisis centers. And so, this would be an, and make it an MA benefit, which would make it much, much more sustainable and accessible to individuals because we know that the, the payment side of things is a barrier for people accessing services. So, unfortunately, it's not going to happen overnight, but we made the first major step with the support of the legislature. And so, there's a report to the legislature on that topic due in October of 2025, just to keep things moving along. So, it provides us a really nice timeline as we work with these three respondents that are interested in, in this kind of service, that it gives us a bit of a timeline to work from, for hopeful, hopefully for a development somewhere within our region that's closer to home for kids. With that, that is my report. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Questions? I'd like to go back.
I got one too.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'm back at, it's the, the chart on children's mental health data on page 79. We talked about caseload sizes and things like that with children. How does that compare with adults? Help me understand.
Sure.
How, how the kids and adults are the same or different?
They're different, actually. So, the state, the state has a mandate in, in the children's area of average caseload size of 15. On the adult side, their recommended caseload is anywhere between 22 to 28, or oftentimes you kind of 30 is typically where caseloads range with many counties around us. The, the state's explicit guideline around it is much more clear on the children's side than the adult's side. And so, you'll see on the adult's side, we, over time, have pushed that number higher and higher over time. Oftentimes, the, the biggest thing with that is, with adults, you're often dealing with one individual. Many times, they don't have family supports. They're, you know, they've, they've lost those connections. Sometimes, there are families involved, but you're dealing with an adult that can consent for services. On the children's side, you are working with parents. And oftentimes, then, how the sibling group interacts. And so, there's just a lot of complexity when it comes to the children's side.
Thank you.
See, Angie, if we go back to the out-of-state placement that we spent $76,000, and I know you're really involved with all these numbers. Is there a number that, obviously, we're not the only county that's having this issue? Do you have the number for statewide?
So, there was actually a legislator that asked for that statewide to say, how much are, how much is being spent statewide? The state said they were unable to determine that number. It's because it's a local county cost and how it gets reported to the state. That there's, there's not clarity on the state's end on what that number is. It's substantial. We are not out of line compared to where other counties are at. In fact, we had a very long time where we didn't have any out-of-state placements, and that was more unusual for a county our size. MACSA has been working to compile that reporting. Now, that requires 87 counties working all at the same and reporting everything exactly the same. So, we know that that's something that we can't necessarily rely on the state to report for us, but it might be something that counties have to report. It is a, it is a very large number.
Yeah. Like you said, we went months without having anybody in it. So, the number will change every month, but I bet.
Yes.
Be interesting to see. It'd be interesting to see what that number is if you, it'll take months to get that together.
Yes, yep. And we can absolutely share that when that gets published.
You know, that's, I mean, some of the larger counties are spending way more than that. And some of the smaller counties, maybe you're lucky enough not to be spending any. But it'll be interesting to see, so I'll keep track of that.
The interesting thing when it, not, not interesting, the, the difficult thing is when you have a very small county. I was talking with the director of Menomon County, and she was talking about their levy budget for the county. And, and we were talking about in, in relationship to adult and children's services, hospital costs, whether it be in-state or out-of-state. If you have an individual child or adult that needs a level of care like this, especially out-of-state, that can increase quite rapidly in the percentage of county levy that needs to be spent on that singular placement is quite disproportionate to larger counties, just because of how small they are and what their tax base is. So, it, it absolutely is a challenge. It is, at every single monthly MACSA meeting, we are talking about ways that we can work to improve this. And so, it, it is definitely something that, you know, you balance, what are the needs of the child and... And obviously, too, what we're ordered to provide in many situations, and the health of that child with money. And that becomes very, very challenging. And so we work tirelessly to make sure that we do what we can within the state of Minnesota because we have that MA benefit in most cases that will pay for that.
Not to complicate it anymore, but this is only the number of the actual cost that we're paying the facility.
Right.
This is no staff time, no travel time for this person that has to go to Massachusetts.
Correct.
In three, four, or five days, whatever it is, and it has to be an in-person visit.
Yes.
An airline ticket, hotel, room and board. I mean, the number is way bigger than this, even if we start figuring the staff time.
Unbelievable.
We do try to be very efficient with that and try and actually go where we cover two months with one visit. Now, that's not the highest quality way to deliver services, but with video, inter, you know, kind of Zoom technology and other things, we're able to be, you know, daily contact with these residential facilities. So that face-to-face contact, we try to minimize the local cost to that. Sometimes that's completely unavoidable.
Yeah.
There may be a situation, and we need to be there in person.
Yeah, that's, that's your regular visit, but then you might get called in for something else.
Yeah.
I mean, well, congratulating, you know, good for them, all the work they do. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Angie.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
You too.
Item number eight on our agenda administration. Mr. Meyer, please.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board Minutes for May fourteenth.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's approved, the minute, the motion carried, the minutes are approved.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I would move the bills.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Any questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the bills are approved.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, tab number eight in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board today, starting with the promotion in our property and environmental resources area of a specialist to an appraiser. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill that PR Specialist Two position. We also have filled a couple of correctional officer positions, one, a full-time position. Oh, I'm sorry, just, just the one full-time position. The next time is resignation of a part-time correctional officer, along with the resignation of a full-time correctional officer. So we've initiated recruitment to refill those two positions. We also had a resignation of a nine-on-one telecommunicator. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. As the board knows, correctional officers and dispatchers are two of our toughest positions lately to retain. And so we're continuing to see activity in that area.
I'll just give you an FYI, South Central EMS is doing an outreach to get volunteers. And they got some volunteers, they've been getting one or two at these programs they're doing. And at one of them, three of the people reached out and want to talk, talk to the dispatchers, be dispatchers. So they're, they're doing initiative to try to get volunteers on the ground for us, but they're also getting, we're getting a byproduct of that. And actually, I think two of them are going to go meet with Tim, so.
Great.
Just interesting tidbit, I thought.
All right, then we had a change of employment status for a temporary probation officer to a full-time probation officer one. Then we had completion of employment for an assistant county attorney, and we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then lastly, we had a resignation of a road supervisor in our Public Works Department. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have?
Well, I think certainly when you have over five hundred employees, you're always at the risk if you start mentioning names and things like that, just like doing introductions, who you're going to forget or, or everything else. But I do want to publicly recognize item L, Mike Samuelson, road supervisors resignation or retirement. Was it fifty years with Blue Earth County? Certainly, I think when you, when you've been with us for fifty years, it's worth mentioning. Appreciate that. I know there's a, a celebration forum on Friday from nine to eleven at the Public Works. But I think the board wants to certainly thank Mike for his work. And there are not many people that can say they've retired from fifty years at the same spot. So we certainly want to thank, thank him for his service and, and wish him well in his retirement.
With that, I'll move on to tab number nine. We have some revised minutes from the April twenty-third County Board Meeting. We inadvertently did not change the date listed at the top of those minutes, so we're just correcting that here today.
I would move to approve the date revision.
Yeah, a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passed, the board minutes, board minutes will be revised.
Item number ten in your packet then is a memo regarding the opioid settlement funds. We have an internal work group that's been meeting for now a couple of years to determine some potential uses of those opioid settlement funds. My place here in Mankato is serving youth in our community, and they're starting a pilot program to work with children with mental health needs. And so they have approached the county, and we've worked with them and are recommending to the board an allocation of eighteen hundred dollars this year be provided to My Place for a summer program regarding mental health services.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, request for approval is approved.
Item number eleven, you're, in your packet then is a memo regarding All Seasons Arena, expenditure and budget adjustment. You may have heard in the media that the north rink did have an issue surface. As we're trying to keep the one rink going during the renovation of All Seasons Arena, of course, we had a failure of the cooling system. We had a release of refrigerant that had to receive some repairs. And so when it was discovered, staff called in. A contractor was able to come in then and recharge the system so we could keep that ice sheet in place for some activities that were scheduled. That particular repair was over twenty-six thousand dollars. Then the contractor returned, actually was able to determine the actual cause of that failure, which pointed to some condensing fans that had become inoperable, which increased the pressure of the refrigerant system, which then caused the release of that refrigerant. And so to replace those fans and to do that research to find out the cause of the failure, along with all the other work, came to about thirty-one thousand four hundred and four dollars of repairs that can be absorbed by the operating budget, but we do need to make adjustments to the All Seasons Arena operating budget. And based on the Joint Powers Agreement, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars does come back to the partner organizations. And so just bringing forward a recommendation from the All Seasons Arena Board that the County Board also support that budget adjustment.
I'd move to approve. I second it.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
It's necessary.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, it is approved.
All right, then. Item number twelve in your packet is an application and permit for a four-day temporary on-sale liquor license. This is a revised application from the Fair Association. They've actually extended their application by one additional day. And so we're bringing that back to the board for approval.
I'll move approval.
A motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the revised temporary liquor license is approved. Anything else, Bob? Okay, before item number nine, Commissioners' reports on committees. Commissioner O'Connor, would you like to start us around the horn?
I would love to. May sixteenth, I had a TDS meeting, the Rural Action Caucus meeting, and I went to the Second Step Open House, which was really busy, took a tour. It was a, it was a great event. May twenty-first was the work session, and May twenty-second, I had Community Ed where we had the Spirit of Youth Award given to our library. So that was wonderful. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Vance?
Yep. On May sixteenth, I had a NACO rec meeting, and I went, also went to the Second Step Clubhouse. I was, it's always enjoyable to go up there. On Sunday, the nineteenth, I had a Community Farm Open House. It's always interesting to see the advancements they're making out there, and they're doing an amazing job. Not sure about how, how all the rain they've had since then, because they had some water issues, but they are doing well. On the May twentieth, I had a NACO Arts and Culture meeting. On the twenty-first, we had our work session. On the twenty-second, I had a Transportation Alliance Board of Directors meeting. And then yesterday, I, along with many other Commissioners, made the Memorial Day services around the area.
Thank you.
After our last meeting, I had three county ditch meetings, informational meetings, which we've seen two of them today. We have one more coming up later in the month. Then we had the work session, which was already mentioned. I just want to say that the tax forfeiture process was very informative to me. It was good to hear from that staff and that group. The other items we had on the agenda were all very interesting, too, but that one just drew out extra for me. Had our South Central EMS meeting. Everything's going fairly well there, reported a little bit about the activity they're doing, trying to find volunteers to help out with the first responders. And then just several Memorial Day services yesterday, and then several ditch issues and gravel road issues out in the rural area with all the rain.
Thank you. Park?
On May sixteenth, it had the Second Step Clubhouse, Open House there. That was always good. That was a good crowd. Then May thirty-first, we had the County Board Session, Work Session. And then on the twenty-third, May, had Partners for Housing, our meeting. And then, of course, we're involved with that supportive housing with Sinclair Flats, all that area by Cub West. We'll be offering services for the clients there. When it, it's going to take a little bit longer. That can happen right away. And then it did have, like, it's been brought up, some memorial services I went to yesterday on Memorial Day. That concludes my report.
Thank you. From mine, since the May fourteenth, Board Meeting on the seventeenth, Goverba Policy Committee met. The work session on twenty-first has been mentioned. May twenty-second, I participated in the AMC Legislative Update. And the Rural Minnesota Energy Board, Renewable Energy Board Pace Committee met on the twenty-second. On the twenty-third, we had a AMC District Seven Zoom call with the chairs of the counties in District Seven, as well as the Blue Earth One Watershed One Plan kickoff meeting was in Fairmont. And then Memorial Day activities yesterday, as mentioned. That concludes my report. This concludes our agenda. I would entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are recessed.